To the Montague City Council to order, if we could do roll call, please.
Ken Mahoney.
Here.
Lisa Keel.
Present.
Susan Deuce.
Present.
Robert Hires.
Here.
Laura La Boyer.
Yes.
Paul Schultz.
Yes.
Mayor Lowman.
Here.
Invite the audience to stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, suit to the flag, of the United States of America, the United Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have been given an agenda for tonight. Is there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Or a motion to approve the agenda?
No, that we approve the agenda as it shows.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda for tonight. Number five on the agenda is public comment about any agenda items. Tonight is the audit and a work session about some schedule fees. Is there anybody who would like to make any public comment about any of those? Moving on to number six.
Eric?
Eric, be up.
Okay. Am I coming through? I'm coming through. Wow. Okay. Here I am once again to present the audit. Seems like I do this once a year, probably because I do. So, anyway, here to present the audit for the year end of June 30, 2023. I'll try to keep most of what I talk about up on the screen, but you're certainly welcome to flip along if you've got the book or something like that. So, as always, we always start up in the front with the independent auditor's report. That's on pages one, two, and three. The top little couple paragraphs there is the actual opinion, and that's the opinion paragraph I've got up on the screen there. It says, "The financial statements presented early in all material respects the various financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." That's the big long sentence I usually read, but that means what it says. "We believe your financial statements are materially correct in accordance of general accepted accounting principles." That is the highest opinion we can give, and it is the highest opinion the city has traditionally received. Following the independent auditor's report is a section called the Management Discussion Analysis. I'm not going to go through that, but that's, I don't know, six or seven pages, maybe eight pages. It's kind of a nice overview of the financial statements from the city's standpoint. Sort of gives you like the Cliff Notes version of the audit, so I'd certainly encourage you to take a look at that. However, we'll dig into the numbers, which are more interesting. This is the general fund. If you're looking in the financial statements, the general fund is on page 54. It's broken out in the most detail. It's somewhat summarized. Can you guys see that okay? It was just a little dim over here.
Now, cut it down this way.
Okay. Well, we'll do the best we can then. 2023 is in the left column. One on page of 54, and the financial statement says it's broken out in the more detail, like my department and stuff. This is summarized to keep it all on the screen, and I put the prior year for comparative purposes. But we'll start there. 2023 is on the left, 22 is on the right. Total revenues of $2,684,714, an increase of about $207,000 from last year. Property taxes of $1,307 are up about $65,000 due to growth in taxable value. Intergovernmental revenues state of $902,762 are up about $112,000, mostly due to additional PPT replacement funding from the state of Michigan, so that's always nice. Charges for services, $155,000 there is down about $18,000 due to less building activity, although your building activity's still doing quite well. It's just not quite as high as last year. And the other thing I would note, too, investment earnings are up from $552,000 with interest rates being much higher, so the city's actually earning a little bit of interest, which, as you all know, wasn't really possible in the last few years, but now bank rates are going up. Total expenditures of $2,208,442. That's up about $182,000. General government encompasses everything that's not encompassed anywhere else. That's up about $94,000 with some pay adjustments and moving back to a full-time clerk, a few things of that matter. Public safety, that's primarily police and building inspections and things of that nature, and that's down just a little bit with the police chief position being vacant for a little while during the past fiscal year. Public works, which is mostly streets and stuff like that, is down just a hair, and that tends to fluctuate just depending on what kind of projects you do. I know in the prior year, a very street curb was included in there. And then, culture recreation, which is parks primarily, is up a little bit this year with just more time, public works departments spent more time doing odds and ends in the parks. Leaves you at the bottom. You've got the usual principal interest payments on the fire authority, the fire authority building that runs through the city. Below that, that is the capital outlay of $238,142. You've got a couple new police vehicles, new city signs, and solar works, preliminary trail works, a few odds and ends in there. Leaves you with excess of revenues or expenditures of $476,272, pretty close to last year. And then you've got your other financing activity here, a little bit of proceeds from sales of fixed assets, some transfers in, and then transfers out of $514,200 for streets, retirement contributions, and some water and sewer items on there. At the end of the day, you've got an overall increase of $46,545, an ending fund balance of $1,864,155. So, basically, the summary is the general fund had a lot going on this year. You guys were able to pick up some additional revenues and were able to do some capital items and some projects needing other funds, and we're still able to come out a little bit in the black. So, good news for the general fund. Continue to have a nice, nice reserve there as well. Any questions here? All right. Sewer fund. Now, if you want to look in the book for that one, that one up here on page 19 up in the front. I have more rules. I have more years up on the slide here. But the total charges for services of $447,330. It's up about $19,000, it's up a little bit from last year. Operating expenses of $605,202. Now, that's up about $124,000. You guys have a meter replacement program that's going on. The sewer fund covers part of the cost there, and also some higher retirement cost payments included as well. So, operating loss of $157,872. And then you've got your non-operating activity, little bit of investment earnings, little bit of connection fees, disposal of fixed assets. And then the general fund of that $200,000 transfer. And so, overall, this fund is up about $48,583. And your ending net position there then is $3347,046. As a reminder, I did this speech every year. The water fund, sewer fund, and a couple of your other funds are proprietary funds. They're enterprise funds, which means they follow accounting more like a private business, unlike your general fund, street funds, which focus on current resources. And what that means is these funds include all of your fixed assets, infrastructure, pipe-in-the-ground-related debt. That's why we use the term net position instead of fund balance, excuse me, because it means something different. What that also means, though, is you see $3347,000 there. That's not cash in the bank. That includes all of those pipe-in-the-ground-related debt and all that. Your unrestricted fund balance on the bottom there is $636,445. If you're looking in the financial statements, it's on the previous page at the bottom. But that's the amount that gives you a better idea of what's actually available or will be available in the near term. That's down just a little bit from the prior year, $677,000, but again, you've got some reserves in here. So, that's the status in sewer fund. Any questions here? Okay. I must be doing a great job, or you guys are shy. I don't know. All right. Water fund. Same as the sewer fund, back to page 19. Am I the one doing all the thumping here?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know what I'm doing.
We just slide that.
Oh, maybe it's bumping up here. That might be what it is. Okay. There we go. See if that works better. Okay. Operating revenues up top here, $967,039. Couple things to note here. Charges for services, which are the money from, you know, charging your customers, is up a little bit, just like in the sewer fund. Also in this fund under other, you've got some ARPA monies running through here to be spent on lead line replacements. So, you'll see the last couple of years, you've had some other, other activity going through here. That's obviously not going to go on forever because the ARPA fund was short-term, but it did enable you to do some of those lead line replacements. Total operating expenses of $1,67,861. That's up about $207,000. Again, just like the sewer fund, you've got the additional meter replacement costs in there. You've got the lead line replacement costs, which I just mentioned, and the higher retirement costs as well. So, there's some extra one-time costs in there. I would anticipate if things go back to normal or kind of settle down, let's see if that'll come down in the future. But again, it depends on what your future plans are as well, if you continue to do lead line replacements and meter replacements and things like that. So, operating expense, operating loss of a decrease of $100,822. And then you've got your non-operating activity, your investment earnings, connection fees, loss of disposal of fixed assets, and interest expense. $150,000 transferred into the general fund leaves you with an overall decrease in net position of $41,072, ending net position of $3,407,600. Ending unrestricted net position there of $433,628, up a little bit from the prior year's $350,000. So, water fund, pretty, pretty close to the sewer fund for the most part for the year. Any questions? Okay. I think... Where's the mouse? There it is. Okay. Do you have... Okay. I wanted to talk also a little bit about MERS and OPEB. Disappeared again. Moves too fast and it goes away. Okay. Is it because you drag it off the screen or something? Well, did most of you have your book up there? We can just read it, the book, too. Of course, once you look at the book, it'll pop up, you know. Let's look at the back. We want to go back to page 57, and let's take a quick look at your MERS funding. As a reminder, the city has a MERS plan, which provides a defined benefit pension.
There it is.
Of course. There we go. We truck way towards the back. Let's get to 57. In close. Probably the next one, I bet. There it is. Eh, it's probably too small. We'll read it there anyway. So, so you've provided defined benefit pension plan to your employees. Older retirees and employees have a full defined benefit plan. Newer employees have a hybrid plan. But this is the funded status of that plan. We have to show the information as provided by MERS. MERS has a fiscal year of December 31st, so you're actually looking at 12/31/22, so this is six months older than the rest of your financial statements. But this is, the schedule's going to build up to 10 years, and I think we're only a year away from having the full 10 years on here now. But if you look at the 2022 column, you can see the, the top part is the total liability, which is the liability ignoring any money that's set aside. That went up a little bit this year, as it usually does, $327,815,550. And then the section underneath that is the planned fiduciary net position, and that's the money that the city has set aside to fund this plan. You know, you get your required contribution every year from MERS, or every month, and you make it. That decreased almost $695,000, $735,000. And that's kind of the story, is that decrease, that's almost entirely related to net investment income, which is the third line there under planned fiduciary net income, or planned fiduciary net position, the net investment loss. You can see it a loss this year, $794,000 compared to the prior year's increase of[906.03][906.13]$919,000. And those of you that have money in the stock market will probably remember that 2022 was not a great year. I think a good chunk of that's been made up in 2023, but since we're looking at 12/31/22, you're showing the whole loss there. So, that caused the assets set aside to decrease. The net result is that your net pension liability decreased quite, or increased quite a bit. I think when I was here last year, we talked about the fact this was likely to happen, but you can see it jumped to a little over $1 million, and your funded percentage decreased about 86%. So, investment return has a pretty significant impact on your funded percentage, which is unfortunate because that's the one thing you have the least control over. It just is what it is. So, I don't know more I can say other than that, other than keep making your required contributions. Hopefully, the market will continue to improve, and your guys' percentage will increase. However, 86% still pretty good. So, all right. And then if we go back two pages from that, on 59 is your OPEB plan here. You also offer retiree healthcare to your employees. That is even, that is your plan, as a single employer plan, so this is actually able to be shown on your fiscal year. So, unlike MERS, this is actually on 6/30/23. So, the top part then is, again, the total liability, slight decrease in liability, total liability of $1,289. The planned fiduciary net position went up $82,000 to $1,750,000. And again, you can look in here, and you can see this one actually had a net investment income of $74,000. So, just that six-month difference, looking at the year ended 6/30/23, drastically different than the year ended 12/31/22 that you saw at MERS. However, the good news is, unlike MERS, with the liability down slightly and the assets up slightly, your net liability went down to $213,000, and you're about 83% funded here. So, that's good news as well. The numbers, of course, we're talking about here are significantly lower MERS. You know, we're talking seven, eight million dollars, and this guy's about a million dollars. So, this is a smaller liability to begin with. However, the city does appear to be, have a good grasp and a good funded situation on both of those, so keep doing what you're doing. But those do tend to be bigger, bigger amounts, so I always like to touch base with them just to let you know how they're doing. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I keep ending up with you behind the post. That's not intentional. Okay. Any other questions on the book? I've got a couple letters to briefly talk about before I do that. Everybody's good? Okay. You also have a couple of letters that we've provided to you as well. The one letter starts off, "We have audited in accordance with accounting standards generally accepted in the United States of America. It's labeled Independent Auditor's Report on Internal Control." This is a recommendation letter. As you will, when we audit your financial statements, you know, we're just auditing the financial statements and expressing an opinion on them. We're not auditing your internal controls. However, in the course of doing an audit, if items come across to our attention, we bring them to your attention in the form of a recommendation letter. And this is just the one standard on, that we, one recommendation that we've given you for the past several years, which is very common with smaller entities, the controls surrounding the preparation of financial statements. We draft your financial statements as part of the audit. However, they're still your financial statements. The only thing in here that is really ours is the independent auditor's report. You should have, see, you should have somebody with skills, knowledge, and experience in drafting financial statements and how information comes in here. Most smaller entities don't have a CPA-type finance director, so we just have to give that recommendation. I admit, it's kind of a silly recommendation. Most smaller entities get it. I definitely want to emphasize that we went through the financial statements with, with your staff, and everybody's poured over them, and I think you guys understand them. It's just the process of putting them together. So, we give the silly comment. I spent far too much time in my life explaining it. At the end of the day, don't sweat it. However, I do want to emphasize that these are just items we came across. There could be other items that we did not come across. It's important to have good processes, controls, and procedures in place throughout the year to make sure that things are done properly. The other letter we've got there is, is our letter to those charged governance. This is just a bunch of required information we provide in writing every year. It just goes through, there are new significant accounting standards adopted. There weren't none that had an impact on your financial statements. If there were, the fact that we looked at significant estimates and believe they're reasonable. We get into emphasizing significant footnotes that we want you to take a look at. Specifically mentions the MERS and OPEB footnotes. I went through just the summary tables, but if you want a lot more detailed footnote, L and M will give you about 10 pages of exciting actuarial data on your MERS and OPEB. But we looked at the important stuff up on the screen there. You know, any disagreements with management on accounting or auditing principles, or difficulties in performing the audit, we would note that there was none of that, and just a few other odds and ends. But for the most part, this is very vanilla, I guess. There's really not a lot of unusual information or anything like that to bring to your attention. Just required communications. Just wanted to let you know what it was and why you had it. So, that brings me to the end of my presentation. However, I am happy to take questions if anybody's come up with one. Okay. Well, I certainly would like to thank the city council for having us up to do your audit. It's a pleasure as always. Look forward to seeing you again next year. And certainly thanks to Melissa especially, who we drive nuts for a whole week, actually, probably more than a week, but she puts a lot of time and effort into this, and Jeff and others, and we do appreciate it. So, thank you very much, and I'll quit bunking around with the mic here, and you guys can talk about more exciting things.
Jeff, do we need to have a motion to accept this?
Oh, we will at the next meeting.
Thank you, Eric. Number seven on the agenda is a work item. Is a work item. Jeff, when you're ready.
Okay. So, the only work session item this evening is to look at the fee schedule amendment. So, going into the next calendar year, we have just some minor corrections. This is kind of initiated through what we'll get to is the utility rate corrections at the end of this fee schedule. But if we just begin on the first page there, line two, and copies will be available for the public after this meeting here. Line two, solicitor's license, $5 per day. This has been updated for several years. In fact, since we compiled a vendor's peddler's and solicitor's license all as one, which is that next line I am on there. But it has been stuck on there, so we just never have taken it off in each of the times that we've adopted the new fee schedule. So, outdated line item to remove that. Copies, both for resident and non-resident. Again, this is largely an update. It used to be a dollar per page. This was based on a reprinting of water and/or tax bills, and the fee was kind of set to discourage people from asking for copies of their water or sewer bill or for a tax bill. We do have some requests now and again for people making copies, either they're coming in for notary services, or a resident coming in because they're just looking for a single copy, can't find somebody in town. So, again, having it set up both as resident and non-resident, so that our residents receive the significant benefit. That's a few cents, I should say, not significant. So, copies for residents, 10 cents for black, and then 25 cents for color page, whereas non-resident, 20 cents for black and 50 cents for color. So, again, just an update there. The two on the bottom of that page, city sign and also banners at Weather Vane slash Allenwood Park. These were already established previously by city policy. $10 for the city sign per request and $25 per request for banners and weather vane. That's what city's been charging. We've just never had it on our fee schedule. So, again, just in reviewing these policies, we're catching some of these.
I want to ask you about something on that page.
Yes.
Number 14.
Yep.
What is a street right of way from there?
So, this is if somebody, let's say, is doing a construction project, and they want to set up a dumpster within the street right of way. So, not within the improved street, but curbside or something like that. So, a special activity that happens within that area that city has to approve. Yep. On the second page there, related to campgrounds. Again, these are, have been previously used, set within the campground fee schedule. These are for water and electric, so the city has a couple sites that are not full hookup, but are just water and electric only. So, you can see the only update to that fee schedule is adding those. So, $35 for a daily, $210 for a weekly, and $630 plus electric for a monthly. The previously scheduled fee schedule already included the full hookup costs. It just didn't have that reduced cost for water and electric only. Sewer dumping station, non-guest. This is to increase that fee to $20. It's largely a request from the campground managers over the last couple of years. Couple things. They don't have a lot of cash on-site because it's off-site management down there at the campground, and a lot of people coming in as non-guest have a $20 bill that they're ready to pay. The sewer dump station is down from the office, so if we have to make change for 15, then they walk back to the office, walk back to the trailer. So, just makes it easier for management of the campground. So, that's, facilitate their work and operation there. Shower fee for non-campers. Nobody knows why this is on there. How long it's been on there, because it has never been used. I think it largely disappeared, actually, when Rothbury started. People requesting showers. I don't know that it's been used ever since, because policy has almost traditionally always been that you have to be at the campground, at a site, to use the facilities, showers or otherwise. If you flip two pages back from that, line item 94, this relates to registration for fish tournaments. So, city has established, or depending on the size of the tournament, for less than 25 boats, it's no cost, but they still have to register. 26 to 50, $25 per tournament, $50 for 51 to 75 boats. That has worked well, but what we're finding is there are some tournaments that just don't register, even though they are required to register as a best tournament with the state of Michigan. Even says on the state site that they also have to register locally to utilize the launch ramp. They're just showing up. So, the intent is establishing a new registration fee, so to speak, but the fee is $0, so that if they pre-register so that we know the tournament is going to happen, there's no cost. If they wait less than 30 days, or they try to register the day of the event, then they actually have a fee to pay. They would pay that standard $0, $25, or $50. The next ones are all related to water rates. So, these are water rates that the council actually approved in February of this year, and were supposed to go into effect as of July 1 for through ordinance number 302. What happened is that kind of coincided with senior retiring, new person coming in, a lot of things kind of being finalized, so they were never implemented. In fact, staff could just implement these already because it's already been approved. It's already an ordinance, but I want to put it before council again, because this will just shift how those rate schedules move over the next year. So, traditionally, city always raises fees by 2% in January 1 to keep up with the rate of inflation, and because of our rate studies, regardless of what happens within the market, and then do a mid-year adjustment. So, this would have been the mid-year adjustment. So, what staff is proposing, as we would implement these effective January 1, the standard 2% then happens with the next budget year. So, it just pushes everything by six months. I did want to pull up this previous presentation, just to remind you. So, the standard this time of year would be 2%, so this was from that rate study. And so, the rate study that was, was complete, based on calculations. So, the current rate ready to serve was 6.49 with a 2% increase. Based on calculations, so the current rate, ready to serve was 6.49 with a 2% increase goes to 6.62. So the cost per unit of water goes from $4.25 to $4.34, so per unit is per thousand gallons. We always have then look at the average usage within the city, which is 4,000 gallons per month. So an old bill would have been 23.49, new bill would be 23.96. So, change in bill for a water customer only increases by 47 cents. So again, that percent increase is 2%, which would match the increase that we would do anyways. When we roll in some of the other items as far as looking at also the debt calculation, because the city has been paying off our debt and also working on lead and copper, the debt charge can actually go down. So it goes from 1664 to 1569. The per unit goes from $3.33 to $3.75. What this does with bill is for those that use very little water, they will actually see a decrease in their bill because of that change in debt. Again, if you look at the average usage at 4,000, old bill was 29.94, new bill would be 30.69. So, 75 cents, you can see the more water you use, the, there's a greater increase. So part of this is tying, starting to get our water utilities to tie into how much water you use rather than these flat fees. So kind of a reward and, so carrot and stick idea. So the more water you use, the more you pay into the system. The less water you use, the less you pay into the system rather than having a flat rate. So I mentioned all that. Everything that you see in yellow for that water and sewer rate, this is just for water. As part of that rate study, it did not affect sewer rates, so sewer rate remains the same for the next six months, so no increase there. Is the already approved rates from February 6, 2023 to be implemented in January 1 of 2024. So that is across the board, all of the yellow that you see for water rates in the next couple of pages. The last proposed amendment would be on the last page there, line 224. There again is that $1 per copy for water bill or tax bill fee. So again, an outdated item. Questions on any of those? We can go back to any line that you see. Again, this, since this is a work session, just wanted to present these, talk through them so that they would be presented formally at the next council meeting on the 18th for approval. Right, isn't it 14 days from now?
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, Jeff, could you just remind me on the water ready to use, the service charge for the irrigation, illicit by, you know, inlet size? And just looking at the one inch, it goes from 991 to 1312.
What line number are you looking at, Lauren?
Sorry, it's 162.
Yes.
And I know we approved it back in February, but that's more than a 2% jump there, right? I mean, what was?
It is. So the, the rates, because they're all compiled on the water bill, the goal was to keep all of those components so that they're equivalent to 2% roughly. Because the water debt decreased so much, it offsets the increase in the ready to serve fee. Because we don't need as much debt service as we do as ready to serve fees. On that, where you're looking, 160 is the ready to serve for irrigation. So we completely eliminated that for any irrigation meters. So during the winter, if you are not using your water, there's no flat fee. So it's only based on usage. The next ones there by meter size are for residential and commercial rates.
Okay, and those are the flat fees then?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So again, there's no action in this tonight. This will come up at the next meeting. What's that? Moving on to number eight, public comment. This is open public comment. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, number nine, city manager updated, Jeff.
Okay, just a few quick items this evening. So, I mentioned it in an email, the city did receive bids becked for the fish cleaning station. So engineer is formalizing the notice of award for that. Final number, so Winberg's bid was $89,500 plus the use tax. So, the use tax was just over $4,000. The next closest bid was tried on construction. Their total plus use tax was $98,078. So, first was $89,500, $98,078. So, and then kind of the next steps is they'll formalize a notice of award and they'll formalize a contract. I don't know if that will be ready by the council meeting. If not, they'll already start working through the scheduling for the construction activities. The hope is that the building would be open and ready by spring, early summer at the latest. So, as much of the work that they can do through the winter, they will do through the winter. So, that will come before council. The other item is city will be removing 100-plus newspaper boxes throughout the city. So MLive Inn slash The Chronicle or The Beacon, over time have boxes out in the community that have been either abandoned, nobody's living there, or just have not been collected. So city collected all those addresses, sent them, sent everybody a letter asking if they needed or wanted their boxes. Nobody wants the Beacon boxes because those are all being delivered by mail now. We had maybe two dozen people requesting for their Chronicle box to remain. So city will pull all those boxes, stockpile them back at the Public Works in the back. And then if we need to reinstall some of them because people did not reply, we will do that. But we sent out a letter to every individual that had a newspaper box that we knew of. So that will happen over, I don't know if it'll happen over the next couple of weeks. It might be a mid-winter project as things slow down, it's not, they're not filing or... It's kind of a cleanup activity. That was the only other thing I had this evening.
Any questions for Jeff?
If we decide to take that down ourselves, are those going to you for recycling or do we just dispose them for ourselves?
Well, it would depend on both the papers. They can either reclaim those boxes, they can be recycled, or they can be reused.
So they will take them back then for use?
Depends. That's, that's up to them. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff? Number 10 on the agenda is messages from, in communication for myself and council members.
Would like to thank the DPW for the Christmas tree. I know I was giving Scott a hard time last meeting, but it looks great coming into the city. The parade was great. It didn't seem to be quite as many out on the streets as I normally see, but it was another good parade. So I hope everybody enjoyed the activities this weekend.
Good.
Just to congratulate the booknook for 21 years in Montague. Doesn't seem like it's been that long, but they have done a great job. It's the cultural center of our universe here and I'm really to thank them for being
Did you initiate the battery recycling program?
Yes.
Thank you. You might have seen it in the paper, there are several battery recycling places now around White Lake. I used the one Saturday, Ace Hardware, where it was Ace. They're thrilled. It brings people in the door. They love knowing batteries are going someplace. And they said a very nice man came in and set it up.
Who was that?
Anyway, it's a great idea. And they're just thrilled. So thank you.
I have nothing.
Only thing I had is during the parade, we had several compliments on decorations in Montague, Christmas decorations.
Yes. I will not be here next week, two weeks from now, and ask to be excused, sponge. Ask to be excused.
We'll take care of that next week.
Thank you.
In two weeks. There's nothing else for this meeting, we could have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank the audience, meeting is adjourned.